City Council Meeting for November 15th, 2022. The Clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Jordan?
Running late.
Maldonado Velez? McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Here.
Guello?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here, and Counselor Bartley's running late also.
Okay.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyok.
And city council.
Just housekeeping, as mentioned, Counselor Bartley, Counselor Jordan are running a little late, but they will be here. They said around 7:30. Counselor Maldonado Velez was, his name was polled first for voting, if you're voting on stuff. If he's not here, then I'll be next. He's on vacation. Okay, so he's on vacation. With regards to if people are at home, we do have to do that motion for open meeting law, compliance purposes. So, motion to take a roll call vote for the purposes of this meeting would be for motions to receive, refer items to committee, remove items from the table, place items on the table, package them together, or suspend the rules unless there is an objection.
So moved.
In adjourn.
Second.
In adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, all right. Do we have to take a roll call for that? Geez, this thing is getting kind of, all right, so the Clerk will call the roll for that motion to now do that for compliance purposes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Guello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley, he's late. Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. So, next is laid on the table, that's still going to stay there because they're still waiting.
Waiting for information from planning.
Okay. Next is public comment. I do have the sheet for in here. No one has signed up. Anyone online? All right, next would be communications. I was asked by Counselor Jordan if we can hold off on item two because that is his and he would like to speak on it. So, next would be item-
Motion to take up item three.
Right.
So, go down to our item three. This is a, from Aaron Vega, Director of OPED, communication regarding the approved city council special permit for marijuana companies.
Receive and send to ordinance, please.
Motion is received, send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four is from Yoni, it's the University Hill Park Phase One improvements. City was recently awarded a grant from DCS in the amount of $520,000, and it goes on to talk about it. So, this would be received, refer to ordinance.
Finance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five is from the Beach Street residents regarding traffic study issues.
Probably receive and send to ordinance, please.
And this is ask for traffic safety issues, speeding. So, to receive, refer to ordinance, and a copy to the police.
Right, depending where those orders were sent, I'm not sure if they came to ordinance or if they went to public safety, but they should go to whichever committee the orders went to.
Oh, synchronized. All right, so, how about we receive, adopt, and then send to, so receive, adopt, send to the alarm division?
Okay, so it's a new-
It's just asking for the lights in Beach to be synchronized.
Oh, oh.
All right, receive, adopt, send to the alarm division, and then a copy to public safety so we can get a report back.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six is from Work Economic Development, it's the minutes for April 7th and September 15th. Motion to be received.
It's received.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Petitions. Seven is a petition for One Cabot Street-
Mr. President? Can we just go back to number six for half a second, please?
Number six, yep. Going back to number six. Counselor Bartley?
Just under discussion, if I may?
Yep.
I, first off, this is an incredibly important board, and the meeting minutes were excellent. I just want to point out to the public, and I do apologize for being late, I had, I was at a wake in West Brookfield. There's, with some really good discussion of those minutes, and I don't want to just pass over them without commenting, commenting that there's some important discussions, Mr. President, going on in HEDIC right now, on the direction of the board. So, I hope that we're all aware of it, and the mayor's aware of it, and, and I, I don't know if we're going to have any chance for an input, but the public should be aware there's about, close to $1.8 million in that account. There's some discussion about maybe making what is a revolving fund into, loan fund into a grant fund, maybe changing the direction a little bit away from its traditional role of loaning for job creation, manufacturing, into loaning for, you know, other items. So, I, I hope that it's something that we'll have at some point, maybe, maybe, you know, Joe or Tessa can file an order, maybe, maybe come and have a little discussion, DGR, about the, about the direction, so that the public can be a little more apprised of what they're doing. It's just, you know, it's just, we're, I'm glad that they're both serving, but it's, it just, I, I think it would help all of us to hear a little bit more about where the board's going, okay? Thank you.
All right, so this was, Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, and I appreciate Counselor Bartley's words, and he is correct, there is a lot of things going on in HEDIC after a, kind of a dormant period. Our Chair, Counselor Tessa Rumbelletti-Murphy, is leading a consulting charge and some proposals that's coming before us, and some very tough decisions to do with some assets that I think all of us would like to see, you know, continue to be put to, to good use. The minutes of HEDIC, I've always been amazed with them. I point out not just the fact that they come out quickly, but we are the, I think it's the only board, and I'm not taking credit for this, I give credit to the staff, that releases the executive session minutes when the, the time is appropriate. And that, that is by, by state law. Executive session minutes do have to be released when the matter is resolved, that put anything in to executive session. And HEDIC has always released theirs in the best timely fashion, along with the regular business meetings at the same time. HEDIC also separates executive session minutes from the regular board minutes, you know, so you can do that in a timely fashion.
So with that, this was just to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. President, motion to take up seven and eight as a package?
Second.
Take up seven, eight as a package. Seven, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Of those, seven was the One Cabot Street for a new special permit for marijuana deliveries. And eight is a new special permit for manufacturing established in that one cabot. Those both to ordinance?
Receive and send to ordinance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? President's Report. A few things quickly. Planning has begun for Hoyok's 150th celebration, which is next year. There is a committee, it's been doing some work. They're putting together a press release, which will come out sometime next week, I do believe. They're looking for anyone who wants to help plan events for next year to coordinate with them. For more, for more information, you can go to explorehoyok.com/150. Fernandez Way, I want to thank DPW, the mayor, Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti, for all their work on this one. Fernandez Way is going to happen this Friday at 5:00 PM. I do believe the sign is already up. December 2nd, Counsel Rivera, or is it December 1st? I forgot. And that one, is that what time? If you want to just tell us? 12:00 PM, can you just?
December 2nd, 12:00 PM. They'll unveil the sign for Extraordinary Way off of Albion Street and North Summer Street. And thank you for voting and approving that. Thank you, guys all.
Thank you. Open House for Habitat for Humanity on Chestnut, that'd be Friday from 10 to 12, that's 360 Let's see, November 22nd, was that approved for the assessors coming in?
Yep.
Yeah, all right, so just reminder of that, the assessor coming in for tax classification. The city will be putting boxes outside, first floor here, Annex Building, DPW Senior Center to collect non-perishable foods for Kate's Kitchen. This will go from now until January 6th, we're collecting food for Kate's Kitchen. Also, the coat drive is back with the Salvation Army. There's a barrel out front here, and then one downstairs, so if you have coats that you want to donate, please put them in there, and we'll slowly get them over to the Salvation Army. The Whiting Reservoir Committee will be submitting the report for the next full city council meeting, and Jeffrey's working with them on getting that all binded up and everything else for, for that meeting. With that, I do believe we're all caught up on the President's Report. Anything I might have missed? Counselor McGivern?
Just, Mr. President, the Firefighters Association's annual ball is this Saturday, and invitations have been sent out to everybody, and there hasn't been a lot of response, but if anybody was still thinking about it, there's a little bit of time to let them know.
Okay. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I guess I want to follow up with what Joe just said, the firefighters also have a, have an annual mass, a blessed sacrament at 4:00 o'clock that day, so I just want to mention that. I just want to mention one other thing, I want to thank the Clerk for sending out the very gentle, subtle reminder relative to late file orders. I think they've been curtailed a little bit, at least for this meeting, and I, I know the rule's been revised. It was Rule 44, I don't remember the new number now, but it would probably behoove all of us, including me, to make sure we review it, and to understand it's, it's available, but it's supposed to be for emergencies. And emergencies could be broadly defined, but something that's really, you know, mission critical between Friday at 12 and Tuesday at 7. Thank you.
All right, with that, we're on to reports of committee.
I can make a, a motion, Mr. President, to suspend the rules to take item 10F and 10G out of order.
A second.
Motion to suspend rules, take up F and G as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? F is for $402,000 from sewer stabilization, capital stabilization, to sewer professional services. And G is $402,000 from cannabis impact stabilization to sewer professional services, both awaiting disposition. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of respect, the Chair of the Board of Public Works Commission, Mary Monahan, is with us in person tonight, as she was at the finance, at the last finance committee meeting, with Mayor Garcia, with our new city engineer, Chris Baker, and a few other people to discuss a very important coming issue that's no surprise, if you've been around for a while, but certainly when you read the numbers, it, it becomes a little bit daunting. There are two orders. First, before we get into the nuts and bolts, and I'll, I'm going to do this very quickly because it was a fantastic, in detailed, in-depth presentation, and I think anybody who wasn't there certainly can, can watch the video, or certainly we will answer any questions this evening. But, the two, two parts of any financial transfer is where it's coming from and where it's going. Where it's coming from, two options were given to the city council. The finance committee chose option number two, which is on our agenda tonight, item number 10G. The reason we chose it is this money would come from the, the $402,000 would come directly from the Cannabis Impact Stabilization Fund. We got a, a good green light that this would be, would pass a legal test, a legal challenge as far as this type of money being used for this type of service, with the impact that the cannabis industry itself is having on this, in the wastewater treatment sewer plant, and on certainly on the combined sewer overflow issues. The one we chose to return to the auditor is on our agenda, item 10F, same amount of money with $293,000 from the enterprise stabilization fund of the sewer, and an additional $109,000 from the capital stabilization, which would be the $402,000. The finance committee recommended unanimously that the city council choose item number two, as, as I stated. So, what, what is this money going to be used, whichever option we choose? It's going to be used for, in some very important work that needs to be done, the, very quickly. Most of us know the consent decree, know the mandate of wastewater being released into the Connecticut River because we cannot handle, because of, mostly because of our combined sewer overflows, but being released into the Connecticut River without being treated. This happens when there's a significant amount of rainfall, there are some catch levels to, that we, you know, are expected, or that it can happen, where it's, it's not be, not a sanction by, by the DEP, but it's certainly something that they watch very carefully. But, the mandate says we got to continue to work on our projects of resolving the, the continued combined sewer overflow issues within the system itself. Combined sewer overflow is the result of a gateway, very old, very old city, that in the days when people didn't think of what you were doing to a river, when you just put your sewer into the Connecticut River, just put whatever waste, and our storm waters just were actually stormwater drains in the downtown area, were just our, our sewers. So, it all just ended up in the Connecticut River. So, not just Mary Monahan, but the city engineer and the mayor in the presentation broke down the plan about what to do with this $402,000, to put us into position for, I think it comes down to three, three separate areas, and I don't want to dummy this down because it's, it's much more comprehensive with what they, what they presented to us, but $152,000 is going with the, the contract with, and someone help me out, it's no longer Suez because they got bought out.
Right.
Viola? Viola. Is, is coming up. And that, that contract is an incredibly detailed contract that needs to be vetted by the city, needs to be vetted and negotiated properly before the next, next contract is entered into. The $33,000 goes to a financial analysis with a five-year lookback. Our Chair of the Board of Public Works, Mary Monahan, explained that in good detail, where we, we need to know where, what's going on at the sewer treatment plant, the money that we are, the city is expending, and the, and the vendor, Viola, now that is, that is overseeing the, the services, is everything in accordance to what the agreement is. And that, that just is good prudence and good, sound approach to, to management itself. The remainder of the $402,000 is $162,000. We, we were warned, I, I think 10, 15 years ago, that we, we've always talked about combined sewer overflows, that the same initiatives were going to come down from, from the federal government for stormwater compliance. And, and that's, that's known as the, the M-14?
MS-4.
MS-4, thank you. I knew I'd get one of them right. And then the MS-4, you know, simply, it's not simple. It's, it's certainly that, you know, we have to be aware of that stormwater, you know, goes into the Connecticut River also, and things such, you know, that can contaminate, it could be anywhere from street cleaning to, to snow removal and salt and stuff like that. And the stormwater also needs to be pure when it goes into the Connecticut River, and I'm, I'm dummying that down just a little bit. But, the, the presentation to, to the committee went in great detail with the steps that this, this, drive, you know, a lot of, talking about the driving, driving factors, but the steps about what integrated planning would be, how they would go about it, when they would go about it, with a timeframe, and it all just falls into place with not just, as I stated, the contract coming to, coming to, to new negotiations, but with the, the analysis and with the, with the MS-4 now, you know, we, we need to be on top of our game. And I, I thought the presentation was excellent, the committee seemed to agree, unanimously recommended, as I stated, the second item, only because it were the source of the $402,000 would be coming from.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. And to the Chair, I know I'm sort of an unofficial member, but I wasn't at your last meeting, so I thank you for this thorough report, and I am very happy to see that we have had a legal review and that we can use the Cannabis Impact Stabilization Fund for these initiatives. I've long been a fan of needing to take a hard look at that contract. I was around when the big debate occurred as a member of the audience on the whole private-public partnership. And so, I'm very happy to see that we will finally get our arms around what is in and how that contract's been operating for our city. So, to me, this is all good news. Does this mean we don't need to have the joint meeting, or will we still be having that for the longer-term discussions? With ordinance? Or have you taken care of it all?
Our administrative assistant keeps reminding me, and I, I, I think we should still have it at some point.
Okay. Well, I'm all in favor of this, so thank you for the work of the committee.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, just through the Chair, to the finance chair, Joe, what's our balance currently with the cannabis stabilization account?
I don't have that at the tip of my tongue, Counselor Bartley.
Was it around 3.8 million?
Three and a half.
It began.
Okay. Three, okay, three and a half million. Okay, I, I just like to make sure that the, that we keep these numbers kind of, not the exact number, but, you know, ballpark number in, in the public's mind. So, so we add, so we know we've got 1.8 with HEDIC, we know we got 3.5 with cannabis stabilization, we know we got around 18 million with our stabilization, and then we know we've got at least a million in the, in the other stabilization account, Mr. President, that has to do with-
Capital outlay?
Capital outlay, yeah, capital, so that's-
And lower.
So, those are all, those are all important accounts that we should keep in mind. I, I'm grateful that we're, we're using this account, this has got to be done, but it's, it's, it's a prudent use of the, of the funds, for sure, and I'm grateful that we've been, a lot of us have been acting as stewards for, for these funds, so we have them available for these situations. Thank you.
All right, so, 10F, that would be a motion to refer back to the auditor. Correct?
So moved. Second?
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 10G is the one we want to act on, so that'd be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The Clerk will call if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer of $402,000 to sewer.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Guello?
Yes.
Hello? Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Counselor Jordan is here, so we go back-
Want to take item number two off the table?
Oh, thank you.
All those in favor? All opposed? So, two is from the mayor, letter vetoing regarding the following order, the community ordinance was referred, nor that an ordinance be created that requires the department head to report any losses of their department over $250 of value to the city council. Counselor Jordan?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you, body, other members, for the indulgence, I was a little late coming from work. This one here, again, a little surprised by this veto. Well, before I get into the discussion, I'm going to make a motion to override the veto, and then, under discussion, I'll, that would be the right thing.
override, it was seconded under discussion. Counselor Jordan?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So, this one is something that we all worked on together at some length in the ordinance committee. We had a unanimous vote in favor of this. We increased it from 250 to 500, and this ordinance change is very straightforward. It just simply says that if there's a loss over, for whatever reason, of city property over $500, that the department head is required to actually report it to the city council and to the mayor, so that we know what's going on. This could be a theft, this could be something was lost, something was damaged, something, whatever, but the public has a right to know, especially us, as their representatives, if city property is going MIA for whatever reason, or there's, it's damaged, or whatever the cause of that may be. And so, I'm a little taken aback by this, what is clearly just a good government ordinance change. Now, the mayor's logic is that, you know, he holds people accountable, good, that it's, you know, everybody has a responsibility to comply, let's just kind of walk through some of his points, all of which I mostly agree with, expected to support and cooperate with The mayor, together with the auditor and treasurer, depending on the issue, have primary responsibility for investigating all activity regarding losses. Absolutely, all of those things should occur. And quote unquote, "to the extent practical will notify us upon commencing of an investigation." Well, the problem with that is, we should have a right to know when these losses are occurring, whether or not they choose to investigate it or not. That's, that's basic good government. We should have transparency around these losses. Taxpayers work exceptionally hard to give us the money to fund these departments, and when things go missing, if a computer went missing, or something got damaged, or whatever, we're counting on the department head to look into it, and just, if nothing else, just to report to us what occurred. We are not going to be doing, you know, we would defer, obviously, to the mayor and the department head to, if we had questions about it, to, to look into it, and they can tell us, well, you know, we're investigating this, and that'll be that. But, this just simply says, report. And how can we do our job in oversight if we don't even know what's going on, what's missing? If money's missing, or if city property is missing? So, if the mayor wants to do these other additional things, that's all well and good, I'd strongly support him on all this, but at least, this ordinance does one simple thing. It lets everybody know that there has even been a loss, and at which point, you know, we'll, we'll take it from there. And if the council feels there's no issue, then so be it, and if the mayor feels there's no issue, then so be it. But, we, we should have a right to know these things on behalf of the taxpayers. So, I, I would encourage that the council pass this ordinance, this is important stuff. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I just, to the Chair, to the former city council, council president, I did see that, that the, the mayor did ask for it to be sent back to committee. I didn't see a rationale on there, other than he wants to talk about fiscal procedures. So, is that something, but, you know, the finance committee's been, you know, churning stuff out left and right, and to have it go back, at this, I mean, I don't, you know, I'm not making the motion, but I'm just, what would the, would the maker of the order want, want this to go back? Would the maker of the order want to table this here now to get a little more intel from the mayor as to what his logic is? I guess those are my two questions.
Okay, through, through the President, no, I think this ordinance is straightforward. If the mayor would like to do more things, then I would encourage him to either call me or another counselor, and let's file an order to create additional procedures, or if he wants to do additional things, absolutely, that's wonderful. But, by the way, he never called me to tell me he was vetoing this, or saying he wanted to do something else. But, nevertheless, and him and I talk on a regular basis, but, you know, if he wants to do additional things, then yeah, okay, let's do that. But, this ordinance is very simple. It just simply says the council and the mayor have a right to know when these losses are occurring, and as far as these other investigations and changes of the financial management manuals and all of that, I defer that to him, in terms of, you know, that component of it, and if he wants to have additional ordinances, really, the logic that was given here didn't explain, it just basically says, yes, this, but we want to do all these other things perhaps, too. But, this is all the sense in the world, and the council, like I said, unanimously adopted this, and we kept it very short and sweet. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing that I would offer is, I sensed a little bit of a thread of day-to-day operations coming from our mayor, and I just want to clarify that this is simply seeking a report,
And I just want to clarify that this is simply seeking a report, is in no way to put any council or the body of the council into any day-to-day operations. It's just simply to know the result. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera.
But this would be law, right? Ordinance?
Yes, an ordinance, yeah.
So, is there not already a policy in place? Like, departmentally? I guess, for me, is the question? And if it is, would this, like, would this be another law on top of the departmental policy that's already in place? Because it's kind of like, not overstepping, because in reality, we should be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. But at the same time, there are certain things that we are tasked with, and there are certain things that department heads are tasked with. And I kind of like, would like for us to kind of, like, focus on what our tasks are, and maybe allow some of the department heads to focus on what their tasks are. And maybe we can all come together and work. Happy-go-lucky.
Counselor Jordane, your order.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for braising that point. It's a good one. You know, the first thing I will say, too, is at no time, this has been debated and been in committee for months. No time did anybody from the mayor, or anybody in his administration, ever come and say, "Hey, could you put in another clause here, or make any amendment, or have any concerns about this whatsoever?" I don't know why, if there's, you know, a veto, I would encourage. I know he's a new mayor. Maybe he doesn't understand that he can be part of this process, and he can give us input, and we would consider that. But to the question about, no, that's why we're passing this ordinance, because there currently isn't a specific ordinance or requirement that people report these losses to the city council and mayor. And my concern is that, why, if I was a department head, and maybe I didn't want something embarrassing to get out for information, or I didn't want people to know about that, maybe that information doesn't come out? This creates an affirmative requirement that this occur. And that, again, I come back to the point, the number-one responsibility of this city council is to make sure that of our fiscal oversight authority. That's our number-one job. Because that's why we're here. And we need this information in order to do our jobs, to make sure that the money that is appropriated is spent correctly, and goes where it's supposed to go, and that public or departments or anybody should know that if something goes MIA, this council has the right to know about it. And the mayor has the right to know about it. They should tell him as well. So, that's what this does. No, this isn't a current rule. The other problem you would have is if we didn't have this ordinance in place, is we would have to, I guess, just randomly be asking people, "Have you had any losses?", you know, and start sending people those type of requests. But this, I wouldn't even, how would we even know to ask somebody randomly? You know, you would have to suspect something happened in order to ask. So, this, on the other hand, creates an affirmative duty to report. And the public has a right to know, and the media, and everybody that watches these meetings, our citizens that watch these meetings, should have a right to know what's going on with their tax money.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yeah, I'll just be brief through the president to Counselor Jordane. Has there been a high turnover, or, not a high turnover, sorry, just came from Boston, so that was the main topic. So, is there, like, evidence, or do you see any evidence that would suggest that there have been laptops stolen, or something broken? Like, what report are you seeing, or what are you seeing? Because we all sit, well, we sit in finance, and so when department heads come to finance asking for money to be, you know, moved around, or whatever, we're basically seeing what they're, not seeing, but we're basically knowing why they'll come to the finance committee meeting, saying, "This is why we need the money." So, I'm wondering, have you seen something that would suggest, "We need to now watch, keep a closer eye on all these departments, because this is missing, this is missing. How are you spending your money?" And because it just becomes, you know, now, I hate using this word, but it seems like it's kind of micromanagement. I want to say that I have faith in a lot of the department heads that I've met with, and I've sat with, and I trust that they would be, you know, that they would promise me their good judgment, that they would come to us if there was a high, you know, someone stealing their laptops, or breaking this, or breaking that, where it's, now it's a concern, and we now need this report. And I'm wondering, where is this coming from? Just because, you know, I just, before I vote, I most likely will accept the veto, because I also have faith in the mayor, and I trust his judgment. He's doing a great job. And so, I just, those are the questions I ask.
Counselordane to answer the question, and then we'll go around.
So, over the years, I've been here a while in this chamber, and yes, I have seen quite a number of thefts. And they were not affirmatively reported to us. I would turn you to inspector general's reports. We've actually had people brought up on charges for stealing from our departments. This is just a fact. Those were not brought to us by department heads. We heard about those things third-hand. I don't have any immediate thing that comes to mind at the moment, but these things have happened. Oh, there's no question about that. Three big ones come right to my mind immediately. We've had them in the tax collector's office, we've had them in the treasurer's office, we've had them at the council on aging. I mean, you could go down the list. This isn't my first rodeo. I've seen quite a few over the years where people have taken off with large sums of money. The issue, however, here is, we need to know about these things. To say that, well, you know, if the department head doesn't tell us, you know, what you don't know, you don't know. And it's like anything else. You know, state government, you know, you're supposed to report these type of losses. City government as well. And this is a critical part of our oversight. And to say that the council, this isn't micromanaging. This is doing our job, okay? Because if the council doesn't, isn't going to do its fiscal oversight by making sure that people aren't taking off with money, misappropriating money, we've had property damaged in this city that never got reported to this council. For example, we had a whole, we had the police station got spray-painted all up. We had multiple police cars spraying it, painted it all up. I had to get that from a photo that some citizen sent to me. I never, did you get a report? You were on the council. Did you get a report from the police chief that all that damage occurred to city vehicles? No. So, I mean, that, and I don't mean to single that out, that's just one, because you're asking for examples. Those are just more examples of these things that unless you're in the grapevine, and you somehow hear about these things third-hand six months later, you don't even know what's going on. And what I want to do is say, we're going to have the maximum amount of transparency, and they're going to report these things to us. And, you know, you might get a report that says, "Hey, we lost a laptop computer, you know, it was legitimate." Somebody lost a gun, maybe once, maybe twice, okay? That didn't get directly reported to us either, by the way. But let's just say somebody lost a gun, or somebody lost a laptop, or somebody lost something like this. I shouldn't have to hear about it third-hand. I should be notified. Now, I may say, I just call the chief up and say, "Well, gee, what happened with this?" And, "Well, this happened, you know, it got damaged," or this and this, or, you know, "Jeez, we were in this situation." And that's the end of it. Or maybe you feel, or I feel, we should do more with it, right? Or we talk to the mayor about it. But we can't do our jobs if we don't even know what's going on. And it's like, well, don't ask, don't tell. I mean, I guess for another, for lack of a better word, it's like, well, I need to know what's going on to do my job. So, that's the logic behind it. And I really think this is, this is an important ordinance to have.
Yeah, I see that. And I just wanted to, final, my final statement is basically, or comment, is basically, as you stated, that you've been here for many, 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 many years. And I'm just finding it interesting that, so for many, 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 many years, you've known this has been happening. Why now? I guess, that's like, the final, like, all of a sudden, now is the time to act on this. If I were you, and I, and for many, many years, I think I would have filed this order many, 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 many years ago. And I'm not trying to...
Amen.
Yeah, it's like, we got to be better.
Yeah, well, we're getting here. I'm back. I took a little four-year hiatus, so here I am.
Givern, Counselor Givern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very quick. The makers of the order, and the committee made it very clear as to what their intentions were and why. And good government and transparency is all part of it. And I don't have a problem with that. I, you know, paid attention, but not a lot of attention to it, because I thought there's some type of policy should be in place for these type of potential incidents. I am curious, though, as to why the mayor, and perhaps it's a compromise that he's looking to do, I don't know, maybe it's a number, maybe it's just something he wants to do, because good government sometimes curtails good management. And I'm not saying which comes first. It's always good government and transparency. But at the same time, we want good management. And right now, management is changing to the good in the city of Foyoke. After a long time, of many of our employees would tell you that management in the city's been horrible. And I think it's time that we, maybe we should just listen to the mayor.
Next is Counselor Givern.
Sorry, excuse me. I just wanted to just go back to the veto letter. And I'm sorry, I'm a little under the weather, but the second paragraph really states that the department heads are responsible for, you know, reporting things in their department. So, I guess I'm going along with the same lines as Counselor McGivern, and saying, maybe we are at a time where these things are being nipped in the bud, and we could give it a little, you know, give it a chance. Because I also feel like if it was vetoed, perhaps there's a reason, maybe, you know, maybe there's some things going on where people are being held more accountable than they have in the past. So, I do think this was a good order, but if it's being vetoed, I imagine there must be a plan in place. So, thank you.
Counselor Rivera.
Yeah, I guess for me, I don't disagree with a lot of points made by Counselor Jordane and some of the other counselors. But for me, it's going back to what Counselor McGivern said, with good management. And we're working on changing the narrative with regards to our management and how our departments work. And for me, like, I voted for this unanimously, right? But at the same time, as we have to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars, we also have to kind of like, sow some trust with the employees of the cities as well, and show some support. And I feel like this possibly is a way for him to do this as the mayor, and give them the trust to actually manage the stuff the way they're supposed to, and allow him to hold them accountable as he's supposed to. But I agree that if things are happening, they should be coming to the council, especially if people are losing guns, losing guns, or having funds transferred, losing significant amount of money. There should be some form of mechanism in place where they should have to report that out, at least, but, yeah.
Just quickly, so Counselor Jordane, I know the mayor is saying here, he'd like to have a, almost like a talk on it. Do you want to table it and have him come in?
Sure, I mean, if that makes, I mean, all I'm saying is, I will just, I have to say this, because I have to get this piece off my chest. I am intrigued by a council, you guys are all very solid people, and I know you give a lot of thought to your votes, but I'm intrigued, in a period of two weeks, we go from a unanimous vote in favor of this very simple ordinance, to now we have, the mayor says, you know, "I don't like this," and we've gone 180 to, we're probably kind of, I think if this comes down to a vote, it sure sounds like the people are going to sustain this veto. So, I understand how politics work, and I'll happily table this. But I will say, ball in the court of the mayor and others, right? What are the amendments? Like, we've had this thing in committee for months, and nobody came forward to say, "Hey, Kevin, don't write it this way, write it this way." I mean, right, all my ordinance committee colleagues, right, we've had it there. Give me an amendment. You don't like this piece, or we want to add another paragraph? Please do. I mean, I don't have a monopoly on all the good ideas. But you can't just veto something and then not replace it, and say, "Oh, don't worry, we'll take care of that internally." Because, you know, sunshine's the best sanitizer, and we really need to make sure that the, we're not going to tell you, just count on us doing it the right way. I mean, I mean, oh my God, if I could have that in government, you know, "Don't ask, don't ask us, don't call us, we'll call you." I mean, do we really want to run transparency around here in that way? I don't think so. So, all I say is, okay, table it, but please, come forward with the amendments. And counselors, if no amendments come forward, can we all agree that we're going to move forward with something that will give this a chance to get constructive changes? All right, I'll make a motion to table it then, if that's the case.
Counselor Bartley, and Counselor McGivern had something?
Yeah, because I'll, well, I'll let Joe speak, because I was going to motion to table this earlier. I would just say, you know, I heard all the points that the former president made, but, you know, look, this is not new. We just had a vote here a month ago, where we passed an ordinance about having a public meeting in the neighborhood that passed 11 to 1. Passed this body 11 to 1. Then it was vetoed without discussion. I was caught off-guard by it. No one called me. And then the veto was sustained. So, in other words, to support the ordinance, there were four votes. So, it went from 11 votes when we passed it, the veto comes down, and then there's nine votes to sustain the veto, and four votes. So, a lot of counselors, so what Kevin's saying, you know, is this a surprise? I mean, counselors changed their votes in a matter of two weeks. It's not only theoretically possible, it's literally happening. So, I would just say, this is, you know, this is part of the game we're in, and we, you know, I didn't cry, but I was a big boy, took my loss, and we moved on. But, you know, well. And, but just on a footnote, I did speak with the mayor afterwards, and had a very positive conversation about what was proposed. And he said, and he would support me, and when the time is right, to do just what the ordinance wanted, when it comes to the school. So, ultimately, I think it's going to be a good thing. And, you know, he didn't like it, but, you know, counselors vote the way they vote. They vote one way one night, and flip it thereafter. And that's their right. I don't always agree with it, but that's the game we're in. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
I see it a little bit different. I see it as good government when the executive branch and the legislative branch can work together. And if the executive branch is not agreeing with, even if it was unanimous, legislative branch, I think the legislative branch has the opportunity to come to the table and see if there is some common grounds that makes sense. It's not a change of, I changed the vote on one Counselor Bartley was talking about, which I liked all the reasons that Counselor Bartley had for it.
You were solid all the way, Joe. You were the one no. You were the only one.
You know, I remember, you know. But I did so, you know, I wasn't lukewarm, I was worried about some things, and I did express my opinions in committee on that one. And I felt that we came to an area that was somewhat of a compromise. Unfortunately, the mayor did not come to the committee meeting on this one. I'm only going to suggest, I'm not going to argue, not to argue big for it, but, and we make a motion, refer it back to ordinance committee, so if there is a compromise, we can get it in proper language.
I'm going to second that.
That sounds good. Let's just hope that comes. Let's hope.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I'll just be brief to the president, to Counselor Jordane. Kevin, I agree with you 100% on this. I really do. And I did vote for this. But the mayor comes back and signs this, and then looks at it, and has, you know, we're doing all these, you know, looking at all the financial things, all the work that's being done in the city, all these audits and everything, and I think, to give them a chance to say, "Hey, let's sit down and see if we can work this out." But I've been here through all those losses, you know, all those years, you know, things missing and everything. I think it's very important, you know, that we know, that we can tell the taxpayers, this is, we don't want to hear this, we don't want to see a picture, you know, on Facebook or on their phones. We don't want to read about it in the paper, and that's what happens a lot of times. You know, I think we have to work together, and when things go wrong or go missing, we have to know about it as elected officials, so. when things go wrong or go missing, we have to know about it as elected officials. So, but I am gonna go to have this, to sit down and go back to committee. I think it's important that we can wrap our heads around this and, and work together on this.
Hold on, Councilor Givner, is your hand still up or? Okay. So, and that's my point, Councilor Jordan, is it's a good order. It's an order we should have. Obviously, something came up and I, I give the mayor credit. He's, he's here almost as much as possible.
He always is. No, he's very attentive.
So maybe something came up.
No problem.
So instead of losing it, why don't we just try and get some answer to it?
Sounds good. So let's, uh, refer it to ordinance and we'll get all the feedback the mayor would like to give us.
All right. So a motion is to send this back to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, back to finance, 10A.
President, um, I, if I could, before you read the committee report, just, uh, make a quick recommendation. And, uh, it's, it's very simple. This, um, MSBA invited the city to school department into a discussion of, of using ARP monies. This is accelerated repair monies that they offer at 80%. Uh, they're looking at $275,000, which means our net cost would be 55. Um, Council Jordan noticed something that was a little off on what was before the finance committee after a very good discussion, that we don't have the source of the $275,000 of how the city would pay the eventually $55,000. Uh, the mayor apologized, I apologized because I should have picked up on it when it was filed originally. And we although agree with the project as a committee, we asked the mayor and the auditor to come back to us in the schools with the source of money for an appropriation vote. It's tied up. It's gonna be either bonding, ARPA money or a combination of bonding and ARPA money. And it'll be in for our next meeting. So I'm suggesting that we could lay this on the table and wait to see what the, uh, mayor puts in front of us.
Yep, 10A is to lay on the table.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just a point to note, snowing. First snowfall.
Our first snow.
There you go.
Put the record, put that in the minutes.
All right, 10C.
If we go till 11 o'clock, will DPW bring us home?
All right, 10C, can we have finance to refer, uh, chapter 44, section 53A. It's the bulletproof vest for $26,400.
Make a motion to take up 10J with 10C. 10J is the matching funds for this grant.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up C and J as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So C is the grant for $26,400. J is from personnel equipment, $13,202 bulletproof vest. Motion to be receive, adopt, pass the first reading for both. Council McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we had the chief before us in detail. This would purchase, uh, 22 vests. Uh, 12 would be for 12 vests that are expiring. A bulletproof vest has the life expectancy of about five years. And the additional 10 would be for new officers, being that they, it would be their first bulletproof vest themselves. Uh, the money comes from the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership and Fund. We've been getting this grant now for a number of years. It does call, it does call for the city to match, uh, 50% match. $13,200 would become, within the police department budget itself, from personnel equipment into the, uh, bulletproof vest account to purchase these, these, uh, these items. The committee recommends unanimously that the city council adopt both items.
So pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk will call Roth. Yes, you're voting for C and J.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Sir President, if I could quickly point out, just for a reason, 10B, um, is on the, on the docket, on the agenda this evening. It did not come out of committee. The committee decided to wait to our next meeting to, to look into the, look over and vet the supplemental budget. But we did point, point out that we'd love to have any advanced questions from councilors or the public about the, uh, budget, you know, questions. It's some minor changes, but comes down to about $245,000 difference. And we are still running a surplus even after the supplemental budget, which is something I think we haven't said in two decades.
What about D, 10D? I don't have anything for it.
10D is also, it stayed in committee for...
It's a network, yeah, wireless computer.
Oh, we, the auditor asked for, uh, for a couple more weeks to, uh, to look into the reasons for that. It's a bill from a prior year. We just wanted to make sure that someone looked at the bill before we just pay it.
All right, so, Council Bacon.
I just had a point of information relative to supplemental budgets. So this is the first time that I remember having them. And so I was wondering about the rules relative to a supplemental budget. Can we keep doing this up until we set the tax rate?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that how it works?
Yes. We can.
I just wasn't clear in it.
The, the part that's not real clear is, is line item control. We, we can vote on each line item as proposed to us in the supplemental budget. But in, in the 45-day period, when we have line item control, whatever we don't cut, whether we pass it or we don't, becomes law at the end of the 45 days. With a supplemental budget, my understanding is we have to vote one way or the other. Now, in this particular budget, there are pluses and minuses that's been put in front of us. The mayor has put some additional cuts that he, and he has reasons for it in his supplemental budget. And then some additions for things that he, he thinks he erred or, or wasn't part of the original budget that now need, is now needed.
So we'll be voting on the whole thing or we'll be going through it line by line?
That's the part I'm trying to get a better answer to.
Okay.
That's the line item control that not everybody's agreeing with me. But it'd be a shame that, you know, if, if there's one thing you don't want to vote for and you have to vote the whole supplemental budget down. So I think it should be line item control is what I'm saying.
Thank you.
I agree with that. All right, so off to 10E, which is, uh, $80,000 from capital stabilization to, uh, border health, capital outlay. Uh, motion would be receive, adopt, pass first reading. Council McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, capital stabilization, I think we all know and recognize it's a long time coming and a, and a great move by Mayor Garcia and the city council, uh, in full, full support of having a capital stabilization fund. Um, the money the mayor's proposing here to take out would go to the border health and would buy the animal control officer an animal control vehicle. Believe it or not, our animal control officer has been picking up deceased animals in his own vehicle. Uh, certainly got some compensation for miles and things like that. But I, I, I mean, from a health point of view, from a safety point of view, from everything you can think of, it, it just made no sense. And I think this is a great way to spend some capital outlay dollars. Uh, would be a, a, a Ford vehicle, uh, which, the actual vehicle would be about $65,000. The rest of the money is estimated anywhere between eight and, uh, $15,000 is to outfit the, uh, the vehicle, which would be a cage, the equipment that an animal control officer needs and, uh, something that just, uh, that makes a lot of sense. Our current officer, Eric Velez, was with us and answered all our questions. And the committee agrees with the mayor's proposal to use the money this way.
Council Bacon.
Thank you. Um, I hope, um, the chair will indulge me on this. A constituent asked me this question after the meeting, um, had watched the meeting and may have reached out to other councilors as well. So from time to time, questions come up if there's sort of a sick or disabled wild animal that ends up in somebody's yard. And so the feedback has generally been that if it's on your private property, you have to call like a Terminex or somebody else. But I was just wondering if there's ever the occasion where as part of the city service, they could go on to private yard for an animal, you know, with, with the city vehicle. You know, if we're gonna have a city vehicle, that's a little different than asking somebody to use their own.
With the consent of the owner, they've done it in the past.
So I just...
Can always, can always have him in to give the protocols and everything.
Yeah.
I think...
Cause I get...
Through, through the chair. Yeah, I, I think, I think the president's right. Maybe we should also have the law department weigh in on why that's been, it's been a policy for some time now. And I, I've never fully understood it myself. We didn't ask it in this particular meeting on, on the vehicle.
Yeah.
But we, it's, it's also mostly what the animal control officer does is for, for animals that are deceased, dead animals in the middle of the road, you know, when that's on, shows up.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, uh, they do some occasional things where, where there's a drug task force raid. And I noticed one eve, one, uh, day, a coworker of mine in the courthouse looked out the window and said, there's something bright and moving up in that window. And I looked up and I said, that, that does look odd. So I called over. It was a, a white and orange skinned boa constrictor.
Whoa!
I was picked up on a, on a raid. And they had, no one knew what to do with it. So the animal control officer grabbed it because TJ O'Connor said, this is above our pay grade. We don't, we don't want a boa constrictor down at TJ. But for live animals, strays, things like that of that nature, we do contract with TJ, with TJ O'Connor.
Yeah, so if it's a sick looking animal. And I don't want it to sound like the department hasn't been responsive to me when I reach out to them because they have. But when the constituents saw a change in the operation with the city vehicle, the question came up again. So, thank you.
Council Tomlin.
Yeah, it was an excellent meeting and Eric, Eric was awesome. And, and we don't realize it sometimes that when the animals are, are dead or who to contact. And, and this vehicle actually is gonna help them, um, with flashing lights and the cages and, um, you know, taking his stuff from his car and bringing animal, dead animals in his car and the, and the disease that's in there. I mean, he could put them in the back in a cage or on, on the bottom and, and get them out. And, and also he stated, uh, he does have a uniform. So if something happens to somebody's house and there's a dog or whatever, um, has problems, he, he is wearing a uniform. And he did mention TJ O'Connor bringing animals down there. And, uh, Council Chair Bartley, uh, we had a meeting where they had Pam Peebles in here, did an excellent job. Uh, and they did do report, I think we mentioned that at the meeting that night, that they're gonna try to do a, uh, you know, twice yearly of report from the TJ O'Connor to find out what kind of animals they're bringing in, uh, you know, to the, this program. And the other thing people don't realize that, and not only drug busts, but when there's a fire, a lot of times, people have dogs, pets, cats, birds, whatever, in the house. And somebody has to get and get them out and, and bring them to either TJ or, or for the city, hold them to the, for the residence until, uh, things gets cleaned out. So he did an excellent job and, and this is really a, a good use of this money for him to do the job better.
So motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk will call Roth. Yes, you're voting for the $80,000.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Uh, 10H, uh, $150,000 from firefighters to overtime. Motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Council McGivern.
President, we had, uh, our new fire chief, uh, in before us, uh, for I think second, maybe third time now. And, uh, we asked, uh, the questions about, uh, why is there a surplus in, uh, the firefighter's salary account itself of $150,000. Uh, we learned, um, that he is down X amount of, has been down X amount of firefighters. There are seven, uh, new, newly hired firefighters in the academy, uh, two that are just, uh, been, been there, five that have just started. Um, the injured on duty list, uh, has, we had, we had a nice talk about injured on duty, uh, not the final report that they're gonna give us, but answered a lot of questions about how they handle injured on duty, both the fire chief and the police chief. But he's, he's had a, a one short term and one a little bit more midterm, long-term, uh, injured on duty firefighter. Uh, he, he's looking at the, the $75,000 from what's, what's going on between medical, uh, family medical leave, injured on duty, and the, uh, firefighters that are, uh, the vacancies within the firefighters themselves. He hopes to be closer to full force by the, uh, by the end of the year. Um, the average overtime per pay period is running at $30,000. This is to keep all apparatus, uh, online and available for, uh, first responders, uh, and for, of course, for firefighting, obviously. And, uh, after vetting it out and answering our questions, the finance committee recommends that the, uh, the transfer be approved.
See no one else? Motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk will call Roth. Yes, you're voting for the $150,000.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 10I, which is $75,000 to council on aging, capital outlay. Motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Council McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the purpose of the, uh, the transfer here is obviously capital stabilization is what we're talking about, uh, putting these newly, uh, newly found but newly placed dollars in the capital stabilization fund to good use. Uh, the council on aging is looking to put $75,000 into their HVAC system, uh, mostly with the remote, uh, I'm sorry, with the control system itself. Uh, it's, it's been repaired, uh, to a point where it needs to be, uh, replaced. And, uh, it certainly looks like the, uh, a good way to use capital outlay. Um, we, add one more. We've been using, the city's been using Cody for a lot of the work in SNE. And, uh, they're probably the premier, uh, vendors for HVAC in the, uh, in the area. And, uh, they got a good reputation. And, uh, I think the city has a good, uh, a good rapport with them and a good, uh, a, a good, uh, contract with them, you know, to, uh, to do this type of work. But the, uh, good dollars would be, uh, certainly would be, uh, uh, spent. And we're looking at about $14 million in capital outlay after we spend the, uh, this eve, whatever we pass this evening.
Council Bacon.
I'm just wondering, how old is that system?
That question was asked. And if I remember, the answer was, the building is, believe it or not.
10 years.
10 years.
You know what? Time flies.
Yes.
It does, it does.
Yeah. We thought it was the whole system, but it's the control system. And it's just, it's kind of an upgrade and a repair.
Okay, thanks.
Second, Council Tomlin.
Yeah, I just want to add on that these, I think there are the heat pumps, there's 18 of them. And they said one of them was gonna cost $6,000. So they're getting 18 of them for $75,000. And hopefully this'll, they'll still last, uh, another 10 or maybe 20 years for the...
All right, so motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call Roth. Yes, you're voting for the $75,000.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Uh, 10K is $250,000 to overtime. Motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Council McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I think as everybody knows that we've been going, working with the police department and the fire department on, on, uh, pay periods in terms of their expenditure of overtimes. Uh, one, so the, uh, it's transparent as to how many dollars in overtimes are being spent and, and hopefully, not hopefully, but also being managed and being, uh, you know, as good as possible, uh, kept down to, uh, to a very, to a low figure. Um, we're still on a, on a track towards what we spent last year, which is one of the lowest amount of overtimes in the last several budgets itself. Uh, chief of police was with us. Uh, the mayor was with us. And I know the mayor's been on top of both chiefs and actually three different departments about their overtime and, uh, trying to, uh, control the, uh, the expenditure itself and, and to make sure that there's good reasons for it. Um, we budgeted originally for 92 police officers and we Um, we budgeted originally for 92 police officers and we had 88. Uh, at one point, uh, there's been vacancies that have occurred throughout the year. And that's why there's a surplus within the three line items, 15,000, 35,000, 200,000 dollars from patrolmen. Um, and that would be, that would be to make up for the 250,000 dollars. Uh, that, those answers were accepted by the committee. Uh, we did look and had a very long talk about injured on duty. Unlike the fire department, there is a number of police officers, uh, during this past, uh, two, two quarters that have been injured on duty. Uh, the chief did inform us of some of the long terms. And he did inform us of, uh, the procedure, which, which I, I thanked the chief for, for going through this in detail. Uh, it's, it's not about the transfer this evening, but important to know the, uh, both how the, uh, and, and it's, it's not just the, the police department, it's the police, fire, DBW, any department that, and a worker, city employee is injured, they have to go through a series of steps, uh, to be vetted out. And each, each department does it, um, almost the same, but does it accordingly to their, uh, to their needs, which begins with the, uh, uh, with the workforce and ends up with, uh, Metatron itself, where they, they finally decide at one point, if the long term isn't coming back, it's time to take the steps to put them out, um, with proper, uh, proper, uh, compensation, but to put them off the, uh, off the rolls themselves. The chief, the one thing the chief left with us that, you know, if an officer has and a doctor says this person will be eventually back to full 100% duty, they, they, you know, by, not just by contract, but it makes sense that they, that they work with the, uh, they work with everybody involved. So the numbers, um, again, this is to keep the, uh, the shifts going, 20, the 24/7 shifts themselves, but to keep the patrol officers and to make sure there's enough covering each of the beats in each of the, uh, parts of the city. The, uh, chief is looking, one, a little better news, our last pay period that we looked at, it was up into the 45, 48,000 dollars. This is back down to what we averaged last year, between 32 and 33,000 dollars a pay period. Committee recommends to adopt the, uh, the transfer.
Counselor Rivera.
Um, I've, so we, they're still, um, running, um, through the chair to, uh, to the president, to Counselor McGivern. They're still running on the budget that we gave them in the beginning of the year, right? For overtime? And they're just transferring extra money from the patrolmen and sergeant, lieutenant, um, line items? So they're still on that 250 overtime that we gave them in the first place?
Yeah, through, through the chair. That's correct, Counselor Rivera. It's, um, the, the reason there is a surplus is because there were vacancies.
Yep.
So.
So then I guess my next question, and then I'm going to vote yes for it because I expected this anyways. But I guess my next question is, uh, where are they at with the numbers for the police officers? Like, they were supposed to get to 92 and they said he would get to 92. So I guess where are they at with that number right now?
I, if I could, I, I remember him saying, we're going to get to 92. We, we've never been to 92.
I know that, but I.
As soon as you hire eight people, that, you know, all of a sudden there's three retirements or.
Totally understand that.
Something happens with, uh.
I'm just taking.
Yes.
Word that he said.
The, right now, there's 88 officers, six are in the academy. They just had two graduate from the academy, which is part of the 80, 88. And those six, you know, would, would get, you know, with retirements coming, would get us, I think, as close to 92 as we've been in many years.
But we'll have the money needed to be able to fund those.
Oh, you, thank you. That's a good question. Yes, the surplus that he's using is just, you know, what.
Months that you haven't been employed.
Yeah, he's, he's making sure that he's watching the balance for the rest of the year when those off. I mean, officers are getting paid, even the ones in the academy.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they're, uh, it just has to, uh, has to catch up.
You're not able to put overtime yet.
Uh, yeah.
All right.
I hope not.
Thank you.
So motion, oh, Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, just to be real brief, and we did talk about the injured on duty. I know, uh, Counselordordane is really working on why people are getting hurt and what it's costing the city. But the chief did say back in July, I think there was about seven injured on duty. And he made a statement in October, it was like 12 to 13.
That's right.
So that's what's running some of this cost of this overtime, not just, uh, you know, people on vacation or whatever. When you get people hurt and people injured, it's going to cost, cost a little bit. So if we get people healthy, um, you know, maybe these numbers will go down. But, and also the chief said he thinks this is going to get us till January of next year. So after that, it's another story. So that's what we'll have to keep an eye on.
Yeah.
All right, good, Counselordordane.
Yeah, uh, Counselor Tomlin's exactly right. Couple of different takeaways from the meeting on this topic. Number one, the police chief said to us, the number one cause of overtime is injured on duty. That's the number one cause of overtime. Counselor Tomlin correctly pointed out, as many as 13 people have been injured just in, uh, this current fiscal year. That's a lot of people, 13. How many, how many officers do we have? It's about 150 something. That's almost 10% of the workforce out on injured on duty at one point or another. Third point, some of these injuries are out where people are out for greater than two years. Thought that was interesting. The other thing that we do need to also, uh, point number four is that we need to consider is it isn't quite as simple as saying, well, we're taking the money from the salary lines and we're putting them in the overtime lines. Remember now, the salary lines are at regular pay. And the overtime rate is at 150% of the regular rate. So you're not getting a one for one value. That's true on injured on duty. That is not true on overtime. And the, the other point, last point I'm going to leave is, uh, point number five, which is, I had earlier given a number out of about a million dollars across the overall, um, budget as best as I could put my finger on it. That's transparently obvious, kind of like, you know, disability or injured on duty or medical claims, like things you could clearly identify in the budget related to this topic. I never allocated anything in those numbers for overtime because until this meeting, I couldn't really put my finger on the, but now you have the department that's saying the number one reason for overtime. So that means a considerable amount of the almost million dollars that we're spending on overtime is directly related to workplace injuries. The point is, this is a big problem, a big problem we need to get our arms around. And, um, look forward to continuing to work with people on, on doing that. This involves a lot of money. Thank you.
I see no one further. So the motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass, pass the second reading. Clerk call roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the 250.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 10L, uh, committee on finance, who was referred 241,000 from capital stabilization to police capital outlay. Motion is to receive adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, the source being capital stabilization. The mayor's proposing that for, uh, this year's, uh, payment and this year's, uh, attention to our, our police cruisers, um, need for police cruisers, that he would use the 241,000 dollars. Um, there, there's a number of, uh, vehicles within the police department's, uh, domain itself. But there is a need for nine cruisers. These are the cruisers, the black and whites that we see out in the street. Uh, each of these, uh, these cruisers run 24/7. They run all three shifts with a different, uh, most of the time a different police officer who's not on overtime in the cruiser, sometimes with a police officer in a second shift on overtime, which they have to stay by, by, uh, contract and by law. Um, this would get us, uh, six new cruisers, um, through MHQ. Unfortunately, uh, the city had entered into an agreement with Marquette Ford, through Marquette Ford. And, uh, unfortunately, we've, uh, been mandated that we have to use. MHQ is a state, uh, state agency that, uh, throughout the, uh, the Commonwealth itself, uh, kind of takes care of and does get good prices. But, uh, the, the, uh, the need to, the ability to purchase, uh, uh, cruisers and the outfitting of cruisers, which is probably as, sometimes as expensive as the, the vehicle itself. You know, cruiser itself may cost 65, uh, somewhere between 65 and, uh, 70,000 dollars. But when you outfit it, you're getting up to a much, uh, much higher cost, uh, which includes everything from, including the cages, um, the medical gear, uh, the laptop, the, the, and the, you know, the ability to, uh, everything that, you know, goes within the cruiser itself. Um, these, there's also, and, and the chief talked about that, and we all admitted that the last, uh, two budgets, or at least the last budget, we talked about leasing to buy cruisers. And that was the improper, improper way of, improper terminology of explaining that. Um, the, these are just, these are payments in, in a system that was worked out partly, I think, with Marquette Ford and partly with the, uh, with the manufacturer itself. And it's, it's really just eventually payments that go into the purchase of, uh, new cruisers. Uh, the fleet, unfortunately, has been in pretty good shape. There's only been one badly damaged cruiser over the last year. And, uh, at, at this point, the, uh, committee recommends that the capital outlay is a good source for the much needed, uh, cruisers that, uh, that, that, uh, you know, provide our public safety on a 24/7 basis.
So the motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk call roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the 241.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes. The president, I'm sorry.
Counselor McGivern.
Sorry to the city clerk. Um, I, I misspoke and Siri, you know, known as, uh, on my phone, Tanya, you know, gave me the number of 14 million. That's, that's our regular stabilization. The capital outlay is, which makes more sense, going to be around still over a million. I think we were up to, uh, I think we were up to almost 2 million at one point.
Okay, Counselordordane.
I also have a correction. I said, I think we had about 150 something officers. It's actually 120. When you count the chief. So it actually is 10, 12 to 13 officers, that actually is 10%. So, uh, I also wanted to correct my number too. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera had to go home, uh, but will be joined in online. Um, with that, we are on to, there is no public safety, public service, 12A. Committee on Public Service, who was referred from the mayor, a letter appointing, uh, Charles, um, Joseph Charles, uh, 332 Pleasant Street to the local historic commission. Uh, he will serve, uh, October 1st, 2024. Recommended be confirmed. Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, we had Joseph, uh, in here. He was actually here in person, um, last week, um, for the local historic commission. Uh, he's originally from Brooklyn, New York. Brought a home here a few years ago up in the Highlands on Pleasant Street. Very beautiful historic home and fixing it up right now. He actually is a, uh, business owner right down here and down the street here at Paper City Fabrics. Uh, we talked to him about, uh, the balance of economic development and historical buildings. He's amazed by the amount of buildings we have here in Hoyoke and, and what we can do to, to, to try to save some of them if they can be saved. Um, he did, uh, sit at the last historical committee, meeting in, uh, with Chair, uh, Paola, Paola. And, um, he was, uh, very, uh, interested in, in what's going on here in the city. He was set for information to read and was very familiar with the demolition delay ordinance that we just passed recently. So, uh, he stepped up when the mayor asked for people, uh, to get involved in the city. And, uh, I think he'd be a great addition to this board.
Counselordordane.
Yeah, I just wanted to double down on the remarks of the chairman, uh, Counselor Tomlin. Uh, Joseph is a very thoughtful, conscientious gentleman. And, uh, it's really great that us, uh, our city can, you know, attract people like him to this community. Uh, very entrepreneurial, uh, thoughtful guy. I think he's going to be tremendous for this type of a position. So very, uh, strongly in support of, uh, his nomination to this position. Thank you.
See no one further. So motion is to receive adopt and appoint and confirm. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 12B is committee on public service, which is from the mayor reappointing Joshua Knox, 40 Morgan, uh, Street as a member of the Board of Appeals. Uh, it'll be a three-year term that expires July 1st, 2025. Motion is recommended to appoint and refer to the council. Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, uh, we had Josh Knox here. Uh, he missed a meeting last month because he couldn't, had another commitment. Um, and we had him here on Zoom. Uh, he lives here in Hoyoke for a number of years. He's served, uh, on the Conservation Commission. Uh, he's been the warden and, uh, the elections here in Hoyoke. Uh, and he served on the Board of Appeals, uh, very familiar with the, uh, the state laws. Um, we have been just recently getting through Counselor Bartley, getting the, uh, the minutes of the meetings, um, from him. Uh, and a couple of them had points where there was two members and one member missing. But I guess the statement is that if you're not there for each appeal when the person is appealing something, that you can't vote unless all three people are there that hear the whole thing through. So that was one of the issues on, on some of the minutes. Um, and he's, he's willing to serve. I think he'll be, uh, a, a great addition to this, this board. And like I said, he's, he's got experience. Um, I'm glad, did glad we have a chance to have him come in here. It's a reappointment, but we did have him a chance to, to talk to him a little bit about that in the minutes and about the reasoning why, um, they had to adjourn a couple of the meetings because all three members weren't there for the, uh, for the meetings.
Anyone further? So motion is to confirm the appointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 12C is from public service. This is for Jonathan Mokwin Jr., 195 Brown Ave, to serve on the Park and Rec Commission. Uh, it'll expire June 30th, 2024. Motion is to appoint and confirm. Counselor Tomlin.
Thank you. We also had Jonathan here on Zoom. Um, he's been very much involved in, in the youth in the city of Hoyoke. Uh, he's, he's played high school football. He's coached, uh, uh, the Hoyoke Youth Football League and soccer. Um, he, he understands the parks. He mentioned something about Springdale Park, the soccer field, how there's like a little dip in the middle and how we can maybe take care of that. Uh, he had some thoughts about Anniversary Field and mentioned something about trying to make it more of a football soccer. Uh, and we did bring up the point that we do have to have that baseball diamond there. Uh, and we did bring up the point that we do have to have that baseball diamond there. It's like a 90-foot diamond. That's important to keep that there. Um, he's talked about trying to get more involvement with the youth and members and have more things going on. And with our new, um, you know, parks director, he's willing to work with them and trying to do some stuff. We mentioned too, many of us play basketball as kids in different schools and trying to bring that back. Of course, there's a cost involved, but that was a lot of fun where, you know, here a kid like me from the Highlands is going down to, to Morgan School or Metcalf School or, you know, McMahon and playing basketball at night. Um, I think it was great. Um, but they just got hit with budget cuts and, you know, having people to be able to be there for the two hours or three hours that you did the basketball. But um, he's really involved, uh, in the youth and has some great ideas. And I think he's definitely going to be a, a really a great addition to this, this department.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'm going to support this nominee. I, I think Jonathan gets it. And uh, I, I can't say that about everybody, but he definitely gets it. So I think he's going to be a welcome addition to that board. Thank you.
So motion is to receive, appoint and confirm. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? On to DGNR. Uh, 13A, Command DGNR, who was referred, uh, special permit application for to Orchard Street to add a second driveway.
That's continued.
Okay, that's continued? Oh, oh, sorry. I had, I, I apologize. I have B in my hand. My mistake. So 13B. Uh, Command DGNR, who was referred in order of special permit application for Valley Opportunity Council for 348 Chestnut. Uh, extend alter a non-conforming structure. Motion is, um, waiting disposition. Counselor Murphy, Ronbeletti?
Yep, thank you. Um, so we had our, um, Development Government Relations Committee meeting yesterday. Um, we were joined by representatives from Valley Opportunity Council. Um, they are, uh, they basically have, uh, applied, they're taking a proactive approach. Let me back up there. Proactive approach, um, just in case the, the, they actually got this permit from the city council, um, in 2020. Um, and they're taking a proactive approach just in case the permit expires, which it is set to do in January 2023. Um, they don't anticipate any more major delays. Um, there were a lot of delays due to COVID and supply chain issues, but the financing is already in place. Um, this is a special permit for exactly the same project. Nothing has changed. Um, but just for those who are not familiar with the project, um, this will be, uh, creating, um, 29 units of housing. Um, and so the, uh, committee voted to, um, approve this special permit. Um, and I believe we decided to extend it to, uh, December 2023. Um, they're expected to finish by spring of 2023, so they didn't really anticipate any major delays, just trying to be proactive on that.
All right, so the motion would be receive, adopt and grant the special permit. Anyone further under discussion? Counsel, Counsel Bartley and Counsel McGivern.
I, I think the, the motions to receive, adopt and extend the special permit to December 15th, 2024, because that was, that was the law we took.
Okay.
Uh, last night.
All right, so to extend it till 2024.
Yeah, and just, uh, so I think that's the motion. And then, then just under discussion, uh, yes, VLC, they're, they're a very credible agency. Um, they had a pre-existing non-conforming, uh, that we had some meetings on a couple of years ago. It's a very positive project, uh, we, we think for, for, uh, for, for that area, which I think is Ward 2. And uh, and uh, it's going to create additional units. Uh, it's going to change one, there was a commercial into a residential unit, so that's why we, we had the special permit. And uh, so I, I think they were just having some supply chain delays and I don't know, but a bunch of caution. They just want to make sure they get all the materials, but they feel very confident they're going to get it done in a timely fashion. So this is something I think we can all get behind and I look forward to the grand opening. I think it'll be very exciting for the city.
Counselor McGivern.
I'm going to say the same, that there's nothing changing in the special permit other than the extension. They're, uh, still going to, everything that they're, uh, set out to do is, that's part of the special permit, is still part of it. Um, also this, this, the history of this building is incredible. This, this building was once, uh, a drug-infested, um, with a bigger reputation than 173, uh, Justin Street, 173 Elm Street, I'm sorry, and 365 Appleton Street. It was just overrun with, uh, with, uh, gangs that were selling drugs. The crime was out of this world. And, and the good tenants of this building, instead of running, stood up to it. And they took over the building as a co-op and they ran it for many years. Uh, and, and certainly it was, it was an incredible success story. And I, I just could never, uh, I always was amazed at that, that and commend, you know, people that stood up to, uh, to crime and stood up to said, this is my building, not yours, to the, uh, the gangs that were trying to, uh, do their business. But a great history and Valley Opportunities, Counsel Bartley said, has just got a, a great, uh, reputation in this city and, uh, wish them nothing but well.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
No, I was just going to make a point. Um, so I watched the meeting last night and even though, um, it's extended to 2024, he did, um, he did say that it should be done by 2023. That's what, that's what I heard when I was listening.
I missed that part. What, I missed that. What happened?
That the, the, they shouldn't be done with, with what they were working on.
Okay.
2023.
Okay.
Right.
But it was extended to 2024, if I'm correct.
Correct. Yep. All right, so with that, the motion, uh, is to extend the special permit. The clerk, or call the Roche vote yes. You're voting for the extension till 2024.
McGee? McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ronbeletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordine?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the special permit extension. 13C is still in committee?
Um.
Correct. Just making sure.
It is?
No, we, I've, we received, we received it. Um, I can give a brief.
All right, so I don't, I just don't have it in front of me. So, uh, Committee on DGNR, who was referred, um, the Wayfair, uh, Wayfinders, um, analysis of the five-block area of Hoyoke, uh, Appleton, Nick Cosmos Way, uh, waiting disposition. So it's receive, adopt and it was just received. So Counselor Murphy, Ronbeletti.
Mm-hmm. Yes, so, um, we had a presentation, um, from, uh, Wayfinders last night, um, and it's about the assessment. They assessed a lot of the buildings and the streets and the, um, vacant lots around, uh, High, Appleton, Nick Cosmos Way and Worcester Place. Um, it was just a really thorough analysis of, um, you know, just some of the challenges and opportunities that exist in that area and how it ties into, um, the work that Mass Development and the city are doing in the, um, what is known as the TDI District, Transformative Development Initiative. Um, the, the plan has suggestions for regulatory changes, um, you know, uh, changing some of the zoning, um, being proactive about that, maybe not requiring so many special permits. Um, there's urban renewal plan amendments that could be made. Um, you know, just the emphasis on prioritizing delinquency foreclosures. And, um, overall, it was just, uh, really insightful. Um, so I encourage everyone to just check that out. That was it.
So 13C is that it's been complied with. All those in favor? Uh-oh, Counsel Bartley, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, follow up on, on the, on the chair's report. Uh, it, I, I, I don't know if this is going to be a report. This is going, it's going to stay on a shelf somewhere or if it's going to lead to something else. Uh, but I was grateful that we, we had the, uh, the background provided to us, yeah, for this really, uh, important section of the city of Ward 2. And, and, you know, Richard Harris is, is a former planner in, in Thomas Alhajly and elsewhere. He's a very thorough and very detailed-oriented individual. We, we had Ms. Smith, uh, who was here from the, uh, Wayfinders. And we also had Mr. Creed, the chair of HRA, who was, who was present. And, and I think it was important that they were on, on the, you know, either room together or through video, I guess. And the, the hope is that there's going to be some follow-up because there, there are certain areas of the city that have had a, a fair amount of attention, especially the downtown, Ray Street, for example, and there's other areas of the downtown that have been completely ignored. And what we're hearing from Mr. Creed, which was important last night, is that HRA wants to focus on High Street. And, and there was a, certainly there was a, a lot of research put into this by Mr. Harris. He went through the whole list of all the agencies and departments with whom he conferred, and it was basically a who's who of the city of Hoyoke. So, um, alls we can say is we, we, we've seen a little bit of product produced by Wayfinders at the Library Commons. We're hopeful that this area, which is yet to be named, but it's the, the pocket described by the chair, will, will see some kind of transformation in terms of, uh, improvement of the housing stock. We certainly heard from Mr. Harris, uh, some of the unbelievable, and we don't hear this from any department heads, but unbelievably delinquent taxpayers to the tune of $760,000, three of them, approximate to $400,000. I don't hear those reports, eh, eh, you know, ever coming before us from any department heads. Uh, I mean, circle back to the discussion we had relative to the veto. Sometimes you just don't hear from department heads and sometimes you need to press the accelerator to force them to provide reports. So think about that, Mr. President, going forward when we're taking votes. What, when we, but we, we heard from a consultant last night, Mr. Harris, who did all this research. It's a 60-some-odd dense report. I haven't read all of it, but I've certainly gone through every single page and, uh, and skimmed it anyhow. And I'll, I'll dig, I'll dig down deeper as, as time permits, but it's, there's a lot of material and, and, uh, and hopefully, hopefully they will find some place to start. Even though it's a small section of the, of the downtown, it's still a little bit of a daunting pro, uh, a project. So, um, fingers crossed that they're going to have further conversations. I think my, my hope, and I'll finish this way, is that, you know, Mr. Creed was here. He's very interested. HRA is very interested in moving this area forward. So let's see what happens. Thanks.
Counsel McGivern.
I won't repeat everything that Chair, um, and Counsel Bartley just said, but it, it, it was an incredible, uh, presentation. Um, if, if you ever get a chance, take a look at Library Park Commons from the Chestnut Street side. It's incredible. And, and remember that block particular, um, on Elm Street between, uh, between Essex and, uh, Appleton. So it's, it, it was probably the most rundown block within the, uh, city. And this presentation looks at another block that we've seen run down for many years, part of it being Newton Street, but a five-block area that could use a lot of input. Uh, Wayfinders, his name, you know, is top shelf as far as I'm concerned, not just with, with the Library Park, but what they do throughout the region. Uh, Richard Harris, a former, as Counsel Bartley said, former director over in, in, uh, South Hadley, incredible presentation. I, I told many years ago, one of our longtime great planning directors, a guy named Jack Hunter, and I told him, you're boring. And he said, what? I said, I, I don't, I don't want to listen to planning. It is the most boring talks I ever hear. But then I looked at him and said, but don't stop because it's the most important. And I can name six things that Jack Hunter had his hands in 20 years ago, 25 years ago, that came to fruition, you know, with, with his vision and with his direction in the planning department. We have a great planning department right now. Aaron Vega, of course, has opened the planning department combined together, but we second to none with Jeff Burkott. And, uh, it's something that I think we all should be proud of and understand the importance. Even though it's a little boring to listen to them, they see the vision and they see what we don't, and they can see what it becomes. Great, the, uh, Chair ran a great meeting. Counsel Bartley understood the, uh, obviously from his comments here. And I think we all should, uh, commend, you know, the city for going forward. And Tom Creed said the right thing. The redevelopment authority wants to, uh, this is the next spot that they want to go towards after they've been, uh, working down in South Hoyoke.
No one further. This motion is that the orders complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is no charter and rules. There is no joint council and school committees. So we're onto motion, orders and resolutions. 16 is from Counsel Puelo, that the legal department please provide an opinion in a city council. See if a city council seat is vacated, if the ward council longer resides in their ward. Motion is received, sent to legal.
Uh, yes, please, within 30 days.
Second.
Within 30 days. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
17 from Counsel Puelo, that the state delegation be requested to please draft and support legislation that amends the needle program in the city. Um, for amend it, would it go to ordinance first or is it automatically?
Um, I was almost thinking this would go to DGR because it's a state law and they would need to file something to amend it.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Counsel Bartley.
Can we, and I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but I was wondering if, because I thought, I agree with the, with the, with the Ward 5 Counselor. I was wondering if we could take 17 and 29 Kevin's order as a package, certainly send a copy to DGR for both and then wherever else the, the makers want to send them. But I, I, then, then you certainly want to send them to the, uh, to the state delegation. I mean, if, if you, because you, I think you wanted to go to committee to, because at some point, per our rules, whatever that number is now, it used to be 32B, but I don't remember where it is now. Uh, we're supposed to have the state delegation once or twice a year anyhow. So maybe, maybe the, uh, maybe we'll have them in, um, in the next few months and we can talk about these topics in DGR.
All right, so motion is, spend the rules, take up 17 and 29 as a package?
I'm against that. All due respect, uh,
Okay.
I, my 29, this is seeking a law change, you know, and, and.
Okay, okay, so we'll stop there.
Fair enough.
Stop there.
Yeah, please.
So 17, with regards to the state delegation drafting and supporting legislation to amend the needle program. Motion is to receive, refer to DGNR and to the state delegation.
Is that okay, Will?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Second.
Yeah. Just, just very briefly, if this is going to go to committee to fine-tune the language, I don't know what the plan is, but I think you might want to just put in the words one-for-one exchange, because I think that's what you mean, right? Is to get, because that's originally, I, I will just say, I'll be remiss if I don't point this out. Chief Nusswanger said right over where Counselor Murphy Ronbeletti was 10 years ago and said, and he was the first police chief ever, "I am only supporting this because they have agreed to be a one-for-one exchange." Never happened. Okay? Never happened. And now it's one for as many as you want. And so some of us said, hey, okay, you say that all these needles that are all over have nothing to do with this new program, right? Okay, would you use just one color? You know, just use one kind of needle that you're handing out. So if we ever see them, we'll know it comes from you. And if it isn't that needle, you'll never be falsely accused, right? Oh, no, we can't do that. So you, you can't have one-for-one exchange and they won't have anything that is like, can you only use pink caps or, you know, a certain kind of cap or have something with their label on it? So it's, it's, you know, who the heck knows? And, uh, there should be an amendment in there that that is at least an option, that the Board of Health could, they, you know, kicked this from the city council, by the way, because when we won this in court, behind the scenes, they all scrambled down as a budget writer. Um, when we, the Hoyoke City Council, for all of the state of Massachusetts, won a decision in front of the judge in the Hampton Superior Court that said, you are correct, Hoyoke City Council. In this legislation, it says local control and local control means the legislative body of a city in Massachusetts. That's your Hoyoke City Council, won that decision. And so what did they do? They went behind the scenes and they took the power away from all the city councils in Massachusetts and gave it to the boards of health. You know, okay. But nevertheless, they need to get back to one-for-one exchange in Hoyoke. Okay, if we're going to have a needle exchange, we got to have one-for-one exchange. Because the whole point of the program was bring in dirty needle, get clean needle, so we're not sharing needles. That's the whole point. Okay? Not to have all these needles all over the place. So anyways, uh, we do need some amendment, uh, to this law to not allow as many as you want for one. That defeats the whole purpose. We're trying to keep people safe. Thank you.
Counsel Anderson Burgos.
I, I just, I felt the need to, um, express why I feel that they took the needle exchange program and all of that stuff out of the city councils and because it's, it's a health crisis and the Board of Health, I mean, it says it in their name, Board of Health. And I don't think we are the special, um, you know, the, the, the ones that specialize in this kind of, you know, situation where it's just not specific to Hoyoke, but throughout the country, where there are a lot of people before the needle, before programs like the needle exchange were actually dying and, and using the same needle was just causing more problems. I think that's where that comes from. Um, maybe the legislation does need to readjust or rethink on how, you know, it's written so that it can, we can do better with, especially with the needles that are found on the ground. But I just wanted to point out that it's not, they, they didn't intentionally, hey, let's take it out of the city council. It's, it's just a public health issue. And that's, that's simply why I feel that they might have done that. That's all. Thanks.
Counsel McGivern.
Counsel Anderson Burgos is absolutely right. You know, our Board of Health did the right job in terms of what a Board of Health should do. They, they addressed the health issue, the, the safety issue of, of the issue of, uh, dirty needles being out in the street and so forth. But when they took it away from the city councils, what they took away was the voice of, of the people of this city and all cities, which is in the Commonwealth, about both public safety and economics. The economics being what it does to a city when Tapestry advertised in Springfield to come to Hoyoke with your dirty needles. The Board of Health didn't care about that. The health issue was still taking dirty needles off the street of Springfield. The economics of what happens is the city, we, we, we have a police department that is now burdened with people who are coming with dirty needles from Springfield and doing their business within the city of buying drugs and getting, using the clean needles they got to get, to use with the new drugs that they bought. Now Tapestry and needle exchanges is far more than, than those days when it was the only kid in the black, it seemed like. And, and I guess some, some of that argument has gone away. But to take away the voice of the people in city legislative bodies, the state made a mistake. You know, we, we can talk about health and, and, and issues just as well as anybody, but we can talk about the entire picture better than the Board of Health.
Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is, and the unfortunate reality that we're in with this program that started out initially as a health prevention program to stop the spread of HIV, unfortunately has morphed into, and we had a committee meeting on this. Hoyoke has now become the destination point for people to come and overdose. And many of us get complaints of needles throughout the city. So it hasn't helped in the public safety. It has not been a harm reduction program that has been effective in any way. And we have more overdoses in our city now than we ever had before. So the whole thing needs to be revised, I think, and the whole approach. Um, we don't want to be the destination for that, but thank you. And thank you, Counsel Puelo, for filing this order.
So the motion is to receive, refer to DGNR and the state delegation to then have them discuss this. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, 18 is from Counsel Rivera, the.
Ordinance.
Cap sign be in front of 72 Hampshire Street.
The ordinance.
So that be the ordinance and a copy to the commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Who? Who did? Uh, Counsel Rivera, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, I did on the prior order. Um, just was a little concerned that, uh, about discussion over, uh, an item that should just be sent to committee and then we have discussions on it then, but it's whatever, we've already moved on and I'm glad that we have. Thank you.
Nineteen is from Councilor Bacon, that speed humps and raised crosshocks be painted yellow to help distinguish.
Um, receive, adopt, and refer to DPW.
Silly question. Do they have to have an orange to paint a different color or no, or they can just?
So this is just being put forth as a safety request because, and the color doesn't really matter. It was just a request was, came through in that regard, but it could be yellow, it could be white. I noticed the ones on Westfield Road were white, but they do wear off. And I think, um, perhaps the person that was reaching out was thinking maybe the yellow would just show more is because when it's dark and you can't tell the difference in the level, um, sometimes they're not as visible. So it's just for a safety consideration by DPW if they would.
Motion, receive, adopt, sent to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty from Councilor Bacon, request that the dead tree in front of four nineteen Southampton Road be removed. Motion be receive, adopt, and sent to Forestry. Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-one from Councilor Bacon, uh, under certain special circumstances, the mayor may grant vacation time for new employees set by ordinance that exceeds the minimum, but not to exceed four weeks.
Ooh, ordinance?
To ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-two from Councilor Anderson Burgos, order that the Chief Pratt come to discuss the possible gun drop-off program, so to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, from Councilor Bartley, Puelo, Tom, and Bacon, that the city council invite a representative from the Mountain Club of Boston for a future DGR meeting. This would be to DGR.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, Mr. President, can we take as a, oh, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, tw- I think twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six as a package, because they're all going to go to public safety for a discussion.
Alright, so suspend the rules, take up twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-four, uh, the mayor, community development department, uh, fund the following projects with either CDBG or ARPA funds, repairing sidewalks, and it's a list. Twenty-five, the city engineer consider the following road improvements on Main Street and then some others. Twenty-six, the city engineer review options to improve the road safety on, uh, Queen, Cherry Street, and so forth.
And, and just on discussion, uh, and so, so twenty-four, uh, should have a, uh, a copy to the mayor and to the community, uh, is it community development office? Is that what it, yeah, community development office. So twenty-four should go, so twenty-four, five, and six should go to public safety, just, uh, hold them there. Uh, but twenty-four should go to the mayor and community development. Twenty-five should go to the mayor, community development, the, uh, fire commissioners and the alarm division, and with copy to them, and twenty-six should go to public safety as well, but copy to the, uh, city engineer.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-seven from Councilor Bartley, the city council inviting the new owners of the Valley Blue Sox. Um.
Yeah, I, I just, uh, just to make a motion to go DGR, just on a discussion real fast.
To DGR, Councilor Bartley.
Yeah, just, just so, uh, just so the council knows, the committee knows, I, I've already spoken to both Mr. Drury and to the Appalachian Mountain Club to let, to let them know I'm, I'm doing this. So that's always what I do before I file an order like this to invite them, and I, I don't just do it out of thin air, I just, I call them up beforehand and then we'll, I'll, I'll schedule it, uh, with the committee chair at some, at some future point, uh, when, when the Chair thinks we can fit them in onto an agenda. Uh, but they're, for both of the aforementioned parties, they're, they're very excited, uh, to come in. They both have obviously direct connections to the city and they're looking forward to talk about, uh, in the, for the Appalachian Mountain Club, the, the newly trail that carves through the city, and then for, uh, the Blue Sox, well, it's obvious, you know, they're, you know, all, all the ballgames they play in, in the summer. So they're, uh, they're really enthusiastic about, uh, giving a presentation.
Alright, so to DGR with a copy, to Park and Rec Commissioners and Department Head, all those, oh, Councilor Tom.
Yeah, uh, Councilor Bartley, if you don't mind if I could add my name to that one with the Blue Sox? I'd be happy to do that. I don't think I got to a game last year and I, I usually don't miss, at least I get a one or two, but, uh, I go back with the Hoyoke Millers back to the, uh, late seventies, I think, uh, it was some pretty good times on it. And there is a way, I think, that we could talk with the Parks Director and, uh, see if we can increase some attendance down there, because it's, it's a great field and it's a great night out for our families, it really is.
Yeah, thanks, Pete.
Alright, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-eight, from Councilor Bartley, the city engineer provide an update, uh, to the future of the public safety meeting, uh, on the status of repairs at the crosswalk and main gate at HCC.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm moved to send this to public safety with a copy to the engineer. Uh, uh, on discussion, I guess I didn't hear a second, but I assume it's there.
Second.
Thank you. So, uh, this, this has just been a saga. I mean, that's why I put in twenty-seventy, I mean, I, I think it actually goes back to just a year or two before that, but I, I can, I can only find emails to twenty-seventeen, so I, I know I can verify that. At one point, we had the money, uh, under, uh, Mike was here, and then it got bid out and the bids came in a little too high. Um, this is literally put in a crosswalk with, uh, and with a blinking light as a public safety concern. I, I realize this across a state highway, so I'm, I'm hopeful that we can maybe get some traction with the, we've had some good success with ARPA funds and with, uh, I don't think, it's certainly not going to qualify for Black Ram funds, but maybe with ARPA or maybe we have stabilization funds somewhere, so, uh, we'll, I mean, the mayor reads all these, so we don't need to send a copy to the mayor, but certainly we, we want to get a good discussion in public safety with the city engineer and then figure out a game plan, how we can, how we can fund this. Um, you know, we, we've had crosswalks in before, Joe remembers well, the, we had, it was slightly controversial, but the one we got on South Street, and it's paid dividends. Well, this is a much busier street with cars and tractor trailer trucks and all that, and people want to cross over from Elwood Heights and go walk around the park and all that, so, um, anyway, I, I hope we can maybe move on this next year. Thanks.
Alright, so motion is to receive, sent to public safety with a copy to?
The engineer.
Engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-nine, from Councilor Jordan, that the state delegation, governor's office, please use some of the excess state revenues to install sound barriers along ninety-one as need to protect neighbors from excessive highway noise. Motion be receive, adopt, send to?
State Legislative Delegation Governor's Office with a copy to DGR.
Can I be added to this order?
Sure.
Um, and I want to thank, if I may, um, Councilor Jordan for filing this. A number of years ago, I tried to get the barriers up there because literally in some of the neighborhoods, you cannot hear yourself talk outside. And so this is the right time to try again, so thank you for thinking of it.
Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask to make a back, add my name too.
Certainly.
And I could have sworn that was a motion I made a little.
Well, I didn't know what was going to happen to the other one, so I.
I could have sworn that. I swore that was it, but that.
Everything is all about time.
I should have had, I had little faith, I'm sorry.
That's, that's all, well, that's okay, you wouldn't be the first, so.
Oh, you have little faith.
On Councilor Bartley's prior offer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Councilor Tom, sorry.
Yeah, uh, from a person that lives about less than twenty-five yards from the highway and do hear this, uh, if, uh, I could be added onto that, I, I can remember going back probably twenty-five, thirty years, but I think, um, Rep Chesky tried to bring this forward.
Yes, she did.
For the area up in, uh, you know, Linder Heights, Beemis Heights, Longfellow Road, I mean, their, their backyards are like twenty feet from the highway. I mean, and I know you go down further than Connecticut and, or you go on the turnpike out by Ludlow, they got the big barriers up there, you know, and, and, uh, I, I think it's important for Hoyoke to try to, try to get on the, uh, the list here and now, because, uh, they do have the funding, the extra money, and it's, it's good that the council can step up and say, hey, this is, this is something that's really needed in this community.
Absolutely. Mr. President?
Councilor Rivera?
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Could we add in like something to, to protect from the train noise and the flats and the lower wards to install?
Let's, let's do it. Let's, let's file.
I've heard that my whole life, I've heard that train noise my whole life.
I hear it from my house, so I can just imagine.
If we can get some of that too, that'd be great.
That is, that was, you're a hundred percent right. I'll, let's file that for the next meeting, me and you. That's a great idea.
Councilor Jordan?
Yes, um, well, this should have been done, you know, you just enter Connecticut, it's like, you know, you enter the promised land and it's, you got sound barriers all the way down ninety-one, got all these beautiful, affluent neighborhoods. Come over the Massachusetts line? Zero. No, no sound barriers. So the point is, but we've been asking for years and, and the other counselors gave the history and it was always, oh, we would love to do it, we don't have the money. We would love to do it, don't have the money. So this is what we've been hearing for years, it's too expensive. Well, now you're sitting on seven billion dollars and there's the new millionaires tax and it's all dedicated to go to construction and road projects and, and education and all these wonderful things, so alright, here we go. Let's, let's get some sound barriers going, at least in Hoyoke, and if we start the trend, maybe Northampton will start asking and, and whatnot. So, um, very, very strongly in support of this.
Councilor McGivern.
I'm driving on the interstates, I hate sound barriers because you feel like you're driving in a tunnel or something, but understand it's a necessary evil for the neighborhoods that, uh, people live in. The bottom of Huron is unbelievable when you listen to the noise.
Yeah.
The, the history of ninety-one, though, is something I think the federal government has got to recognize is ninety-one was not supposed to come the route that it took. Ninety-one is supposed to actually be, what is the route of three ninety-one? Come into Hoyoke, it was going to dissect downtown and go down Beach Street and then either cross over the river into South Hallie or go up those train tracks at, Councilor Rivera, so, uh, gracefully pointed out. I mean, that, and we can hear the trains up in Downing Ave and Elwood Heights there, is it, you know? And I can hear it when it goes around Dead Man's Curve anytime with those three whistles. But the, the point is, it, it's a necessary evil and it's time that, uh, Massachusetts gets its fair share.
Anyone further? So on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty is from Councilor Jordan, that DPW Suez please unclog and fix the street sewer drain at one sixty-six Lincoln Street. Motion is receive, adopt?
Yes.
To Suez and DPW?
Yes, and I have to be corrected again myself, apparently a few months ago, Violia bought Suez. I, I made a joke the other night in committee, I said, they're going to have to put the signs in Velcro on the, on our equipment, because they keep changing the names of the companies that own them. We've had, I don't know how many owners, you know, so anyways, yes, so it's actually Violia now, but yes, receive and adopt, please, if they could go that, uh, go and help this, uh, these residents, that would be greatly appreciated, and it's caving in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thirty-one from Councilor McGee, Puelo, and Tom, and that the city council present proclamations at the Veterans Day Memorial, uh, Ceremony for Brendan Boyle, Olivia Mazul, and Phil Levelle. Motion be receive, adopt, and approve the, for proclamations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those were done.
Yes, they're done, yeah. Mr. President, that's Phil Levy, not Levelle, Levy, yeah.
Uh, thirty-two from myself, that, um, a new street light be installed near forty-eight Pearl Street. Motion be receive, adopt, sent to HG&E. I think we also have to go copy.
You're putting in a light or a new street?
A street light.
Light.
Okay. Just, it might be a typo on our agenda, it says new street little, but I just assumed what you meant, new, a new little street. I thought they were popping in there, yeah.
So you're typing it up in your phone.
Oh, it's a light.
It's a light.
Light. Okay, very good.
All, yeah.
Mr. President, can I make a motion to suspend rules and to take up items thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four? Refer to committee on finance. On thirty-three, which is under your name, that's the resolution that would go with the Anniversary Hill Park Grant, uh, that grant will eventually end up in, I'm not sure if it's late filed tonight, but that should end up in finance to go with the resolution.
There is one late filed. Um, so take those up as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thirty-three, real quick, is the grant that, uh, Councilor McGee was talking about. Thirty-four is twenty thousand from property management to other contracted services. Thirty-seven is ten thousand election, election officers to overtime R, R and M other. Uh, thirty-eight is fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents, uh, from, uh, heavy motor equipment to R and M street and fixtures, highway. Thirty-nine is the road safety grant, thirty-five thousand, no match. Forty is the Anniversary Hill Park, uh, Phase One Project Grant. Forty-one is Hoyoke School Department, one million, sixty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight, uh, anonymous donation.
No, if you could skip forty-one, I need to address that separate.
Alright, so leave forty-one aside. Forty-two is three thousand, three hundred from cannabis stabilization to fire department equipment. Forty-three is seventy-five thousand from cannabis stabilization to Board of Health, uh, professional services. All those to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
You suspend the rules to take items thirty-five and thirty-six as a package to adopt?
Take up thirty-five and thirty-six as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Thirty-five is thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy cents for injured on duty, that's the police, which would be? Thirteen. Thirty-six.
I think I gave you the wrong number, Mr. President, thirty-four.
That was thirty-five. And then thirty-six.
It's thirty-six.
Yep, thirty-six is three thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents from firefighters to injured on duty. So motion is passed, first reading. Councilor McGivern.
We've had the initial discussion, and we had a good discussion at the last city council meeting. We've had an initial preliminary discussion with both chiefs and they understand our concerns about injured on duty. Um, this doesn't change any economics, the individuals that are injured on duty will be getting, to get their salaries by contract, by, and by the correct thing to do for someone who got hurt while in, in the, uh, active line of duty. Um, however, we are looking for more answers, a report, both, uh, chiefs have, uh, told us that a report will be forthcoming, where we can have a much, uh, more detailed discussion, uh, in the finance committee or wherever the city council chooses. But, uh, for now, this is just an accounting move to, uh, keep track of where our salary dollars go when the person is not actually performing the, uh, the duty because of injury.
Yeah, Councilor Bacon.
Thank you. I just, um, through you, I just want to thank the Chair for taking this up and following up on some of the questions that had been coming up on this. It's appreciated.
So motion is passed the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for thirty-five and thirty-six.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve those two.
Mr. President, I don't believe we're going to dive into this, Joe, I don't want to. I, I made, I had a typo in, in one of my orders and, and I just want to correct, I don't think we have to reconsider our action, but, uh, it was just in twenty-four, I was looking at it in the third sentence, Todd, it said between Coit Street and Queen Street. Well, that's wrong, it should be say, it's the east side of Queen Street between Coit and King Street.
King?
Can, can we just, can I just make a quick motion to amend that?
So motion is to amend twenty-four to fix that error.
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sorry about that.
King, queen, you know, royalty.
Yeah, I know, West King too, everything, it goes on and on, Joe.
Alright, so forty-one, back to that one, that's the one million, sixty-six thousand, five, five forty-eight anonymous donation. Councilor McGivern.
I can make a motion to return this to the auditor at her request. Um, I think we all know Master and Relatch after forty-four, any gifts to a municipality must be accepted by, in our case, the legislative body and, and the mayor. Uh, this is a gift, a very anonymous, but, uh, very generous gift to the school department and under, uh, under receivership and under the, uh, state of, of which the finances are with the schools, this decision is made by the receiver, by the state itself. But, uh, the auditor just was doing her due diligence and then really was brought to her attention. to her attention that this should be the, uh, this is decision of the schools, not the, uh, not the city council.
All right, so this is refer back to the auditor.
Can we get a legal opinion on that?
I, we can, if you wanna refer a copy to the law department just to weigh in.
I'd like to, yeah, I...
Wanna table it and send it to legal and just get any answer to it?
So, yeah, so basically, I, I, yeah, we'd just like to understand the underpinning on the municipal finance side of it, of how they can receive money without, I mean, even their own budget has to be adopted by the city council. We still have to, even under receivership, we have to approve the gross budget. So if that's the case, why would this be any different? I'd like to see that in a legal opinion. I didn't see a statute exception for receivership on grants, but if it's there, I'll, I'll, I'd certainly be, it's a, it's a, it's an important, interesting legal point and I, I'll do my homework on it.
Um, good, if I could. It's, yes, it's, um, you know, the, this is a gift, not, not, you know, not so much an appropriation, but we do adopt the overall budget. We don't have line item control.
Right.
And we never had to accept grants for the school department. That's always been taken care of by the, by the schools, by the school committee, which, which does make sense too. Um, it's more important about the transparency of money being spent and knowing money's coming in. And, and certainly, I think, even though it's anonymous, you know, respect that, you know, knowing that people are, do and can be very generous in making gifts to the city.